I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we've got all board members here today except for Mr. Bliss. And we'll start with the approval of the consent agenda, which is the minutes of the January 24th board meeting.
I move that we approve the January 24th regular school board meeting minutes.
Support?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public comments, do we have any public comments tonight? Committee reports, finance.
So we just, the finance committee just met prior to tonight's meeting. We went over the budget amendments, the projections continue to be within expectations, what we outlined at the beginning of the year. Lot of, lot of money moving around because of COVID dollars and that type of thing, but everything seems to be consistent. And things are looking good.
Okay, thank you. And academic affairs?
Yeah, we had discussions about the spring term, start time for middle school and high school, and nasty.
Thank you. Alright, next, we have a number of presentations tonight, and we were, is the Spanish one still on?
Yeah, we bumped that for a future meeting.
Okay.
Because we figured there's, we've got enough.
We've got enough, okay, that's what I thought you just said. Okay, library council, Mrs. Howard?
Yeah, Mrs. Howard is here, Ken, I don't know if you wanted to say anything prior, or just hand it over to Mrs. Howard?
Yeah, she'll do great.
The floor is your.
Alright, so I have, I'm here with three students from middle school and high school library council, both. Here with Cole and Bear and Logan, and they're gonna each present a slide, but I told them that I would get it kinda started off. So in the fall, I went to the Michigan School Librarians Conference and got this idea actually from one of the other librarians from the other side of the state. And thought that it might be something nice for our school to give students a voice in the library. And so I kinda sent out a student survey, just to see if there was any interest, but if we got enough students that we could start a library council. And I actually had enough interest from both middle school and high school students that we started separate councils, one group for the middle school and one group for the high school. Just because I thought that combining them, they might be kind of too big of a group, so can I just tap?
There's a remote, no right now.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. Maybe? Anyway, technology, okay. So following the student survey, we had our first meeting at the beginning of November 2021. And the purpose of the library council was basically to give students a voice in the library as far as book selection and book purchases. If they had suggestions, or they wanted to look through book catalogs and orders and things to give me their opinions. I was also looking for ideas for activities and promotions, which is what we're gonna talk more about today. And then also just to give kids who like to read a place to come hang out with other kids who like to read. They could maybe generate some conversation about books, or help people find other kids in common who maybe might share enjoyment of the same books. So that was our purpose, and we kind of decided that we would let the council evolve as we went along, just depending on what the kids wanted. Cause really, it's, it's for them, and so we're just kinda trying some different things to see how it goes. And we can let the, the activities and stuff evolve as we go along. So, nope, wrong way, my bad. No wonder it wouldn't go, I was hitting the wrong button. Okay, so Bear's gonna talk to us a little bit about the first couple of things we tried in December.
So, the first thing we did in December is we sponsored a book exchange where students would bring in books, or donate books. And other students could pick up books that were already donated. And then we also, during our Snowwell, we did a book wrapping contest. And the winner, Naomi Zianvassa, won a Barnes &amp; Noble's gift card. And Ella Potts, the runner-up, won a candy bar.
And there were some really creative wrapping jobs that they came up with, so that was kind of fun. And because we had the tree set up in the library, they ended up putting the wrapped books around the tree, and it was just kind of fun for North Snowwell. Thank you. Alright, Logan, I think you're up.
Alright, so, I'm one of the high school representatives for student council currently at this meeting. And I actually am in, so here's Anna Komen, me reading to Ms.
Etchison.
Etchison's class. And I actually read to Ms. Sunabout's class the day the Crans left. So, I personally was part of this, I went down during a Norse time and read to them, and the kids seemed to really enjoy it. And I had a lot of fun reading to them too, they had interesting questions, like why are things the way they are? Like why are colors, like why is the sky blue, why is it not purple?
I remember that one.
And I, I think that it went very well. And that incorporating more literature-based, like subjects from high schoolers and middle schoolers with the elementary can help to kind of grow their fascination with books and learning. And sort of develop more of like an incline later when they're older, to not only read, but participate in maybe even their own library council one day. And I think that's really cool.
And Logan did a great job reading, I was, I was really impressed. So we had five students in total who read to different elementary classes, but we'll read a lot of them, so that's, thank you. Alright, Cole?
This year, we started with a PENPAL program with several students recommended by their elementary teachers. I personally have a buddy, and he is really excited for what we've started with the PENPAL. We have three high school students and six middle schoolers, including me, partnered with two second, with second graders and fourth grade students as PENPALS. We co-sponsored activities for the Random Acts of Kindness Week, February 14th through the 17th, with student council, including a food drive for healthcare heroes, and activities during Norse time to promote kindness in our school and community.
Great, thank you. Do you guys have any questions for any of us, or?
What format is the PENPAL? Is it emails, or you guys actually sit down and write?
Yeah.
Not Snapchat, right?
So Cole actually made his own stationery on the computer, so it actually says "from the desk of" at the top, which is kinda cool. And then we, I bought some stationery sets, so if the kids wanted to do like the stationery with the envelope and stuff, they could do that. We actually just had one come back from the elementary for one of our high school PENPALS. That was, the whole envelope was decorated, and she did like an origami thing that went with it, and it was all tied up with a ribbon. So it's, it's kinda neat, the kids are getting into it, and it's, it's fun. We've, so far, we've had, we've written, they've written back, we've written, and I think we're starting to get the second round back. So, and we're hoping later on in the spring that we can have like a little meetup day where the kids can actually meet each other, maybe have some snacks or something, just to kinda culminate it at the end of the year.
So how many kids total are involved?
It depends on the, on the day and what else is going on. We usually meet, we'll meet the first Wednesday of the month Norse time for middle school, and the second Wednesday of the month Norse time for high school. So I think the most we've had in a meeting is what, like 20? And the least, maybe like eight or 10?
Wow.
So is that somebody? So pretty good turnout.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. I was happy.
Mrs. Howard has taken the services in our libraries to a whole nother level since she's taken this position. This is just one of many things that she's got going and implemented, and it's just the start, she's just getting rolling. So I'm, I'm super excited, I know Ken is, Ken is as well. And just so everyone understands how things work, Brett also does some assisting with the elementary and trying to partner with the elementary level library as well. So it's been a great move, and thank you for everything you do for our whole district, you're, you're amazing. She keeps her eye on legislature and changing laws, that I go, huh, yeah, guess we probably need to take care of that, yeah, that was actually an email today, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Well done.
Alrighty, next is strong schools and a special ed millage.
Yeah, today we've got Carly Parker from the intermediate school district. She's our county's special education director. You guys have been getting information as we've been advancing toward the potential for our community to go for a special education supporting millage. And she's come to share where we're at with that, and just kinda give us the update and where things are going.
Well, thanks for giving me a few minutes tonight. As Kurt mentioned, I'm Carly Parker, I work for Muskegon ISD. I have had the pleasure of working in Muskegon County for 22 years, almost 23. Started as a teacher in Fruitport, then a special ed supervisor for Fruitport, Okra, Georgetown, View and Orvina. Then I went to the ISD when we brought all of the infant toddler services together, and then I'm currently in this position. So I've had an opportunity over 23 years to spend a lot of time out in a lot of districts, and really see our continuum of special education services, literally from our little babies that get referred to us out of DeVos's NICU, up through our 26-year-olds that we're servicing in transition center programming. So what we're talking about today is moving forward with a special education millage. Why would the ISD be the one promoting that? That's because we're the only ones allowed to put a special ed millage on a ballot. So that is not something that a local district can put on a ballot independently. It is something that has to be facilitated countywide through the ISD. The other why is, in Muskegon County, we have been underfunded for special education for well over 30 to 40 years, but really as far back as you can dig in the data archives for funding. Meaning that about 40 to 50% of special education costs come out of your general fund budget. It means that the revenue coming in for the state and federal mandates around special education do not fulfill the fiscal responsibility to actually deliver those essential and mandated services that we provide 0 to 26. So although right now, we have some of these temporary dollars coming in, and it sounds like you've just got out of a budget meeting, so you know all the other pieces of funding that are flowing right now. As Mark will talk a little more in detail, and I'm sure did at the budget meeting, those are temporary dollars. Those of us that have been around for a little while, remember the ARA dollars, and they came and they went. Those temporary dollars will not fix the historical underfunding of special education in our county. We have a lower millage rate than most counties do, meaning, Mark will talk a little bit about the mills, meaning that what we're using in that formula is a lower rate than other places. And then if you combine that with the taxable value in Muskegon County, it means a smaller amount of money coming out of that. Because what's part of that formula is our overall taxable value. It's why when we compare ourselves to our neighbors, Kent is an enormous ISD, it's very hard to compare ourselves to that. And Ottawa ISD has a significantly different taxable value base, which is why when we talk about county comparisons, some counties can almost fully fund their special education, and some counties cannot. It's not because of fiscal irresponsibility. This rate of underfunding has been similar for at least the last 20 to 30 years, meaning that 40 to 50% of underfunding, and that 40 to 50% of special education expenditures that come out of the general fund budget. The reason that we're looking at the millage is because it is a way to secure additional dollars back to our local districts to help offset the expenditures you've already had. So these dollars come back into your budget unrestricted, because you've already spent that money on special education. Most of what Mark will go over with the specifics for North Muskegon and across our county means that instead of 40 to 50% underfunding, most people would be in the high twenties to low thirties for underfunding. So it is not perfect, it does not completely close our gap. We would not be able to levy a high enough millage rate to close that gap completely, but it certainly could make a significant difference annually for our districts. So Mark will talk about what that would look like annually coming into your districts. For the county, it's about $10 million a year. This would be for 10 years, meaning approximately $100 million coming into the ISD and out to the local districts in two different ways, which Mark will talk about a little bit, to offset billback for programming that we provide countywide and flow directly through for your general fund. The one piece I'll talk about, and then it's all Mark, is, and when I talk about billback, that's in reference to ISD-run programs for the county. For us, I guess to put it in our perspective, there's about 4,000 active IEPs in Muskegon County right now. So about 4,000 students receive some form of special education support and service through our counties in our local districts. For you, you're about 105 IEPs, give or take what day you pull the numbers from our system. So, a smaller percentage of that. We have center-based programs that we run for all of our districts, and your utilization of that is about proportionate to your rates of IEPs. So we have our infant toddler program, that's our home visiting program for birth to three. Like I was saying, as soon as babies come out of the NICU oftentimes, all the way up to later age referrals for speech delays and things like that. You average about three to eight kids at any given time from North Muskegon that are part of the home visiting program. Next up, we've got Wesley School, those are our three-year-olds up to 18. Those are pretty, those are our students who have really complex needs, often motor-involved, cognitively-involved, might require nursing services. They attend Wesley School, you currently have two students from North Muskegon there. Transition Campus is where I talked about our birth to 26, that's our 18 to 26-year-olds. So it's our young adults who did not graduate from high school with a regular diploma and are eligible for those continued transition services. North Muskegon has two right now, again, kind of average about two to five in those programs at any given time. Lake Shore Learning Center is our center-based program for students with significant emotional impairments. You do not have any students currently attending that program, and, and rarely have over the years, maybe one at any given time. But those are the ISD programs that all districts in our county can be a part of, if they have a student that needs that level of support. And then the other piece is, so that's part of, what's part of our formula for funding. And then the other part is what flows through to the actual districts to go into their general fund. So you'll hear Mark talk about billback versus flowing funds through. Anything else specific that you wanted right now?
I think you're good.
Okay, I'll sit over here, and if you have any questions.
So, these are all the slides that Carly had, so this is kinda what she talked about, and I can share this with you guys after this meeting. So I, what I tried to do is I take it, take special ed, complex situation, and really dive down into put what, what does that impact for North Muskegon? So kinda what Carly was saying, so the expenses, North Muskegon really spends special ed three different ways. You got the local, which are just students inside this building. You have the north service unit, so Puffer, we send kids to Puffer with a regional classroom. Then at the end of the year, Puffer sends us a bill, okay, they net out all the special ed funding. And they say, here you go, North Muskegon, your portion is $25,000. Lastly, is what Carly was saying, we have two kids at Wesley, two kids at Craig, and then a county-wide, any county-wide consortiums, same thing. Other than Puffer sending us a bill at the end of the year, the IC says, here you go, here's a bill for $120,000. It's always based on number of kids that you have in the program, so it's not size of district, it's, it's, I call it pay to play. If you have a kid, you're gonna pay for it. And then, and then, so here is nine years of expenses. I break it down with, you got IDA, so this is the, there's a federal grant that we get. So it's, the district has the ability to put whatever we want for federal grants. And then you have local costs, north service cost, and then shared cost, which is what the IC bills us, right? So you can see, last year, we spent a little bit less than $1.5 million on special ed. And then the revenue side, you have state, federal, local, so federal is that IDA grant that we get. We get $89,000 to $95,000 a year. State, you get the foundational, so it doesn't matter if they're special ed or general ed, you still get the $8,700 per kid. The difference is how they calculate it. So 51F, for every dollar you spend, the state says, here you go, here's 28 cents. The difference is, they say, if, if I got a million dollars of expenses, and I got $100,000 of foundation, the state's gonna say, I'll give you a million dollars, but I'm gonna net the $100,000 in the foundation, so here's $900,000. So it's truly, it's kinda like how property taxes in the state run. The more property taxes you have, the less state money that you're gonna get, cause everyone's equal. The difference is, Governor Whitmer, last couple of years, has said, you know what, I understand special ed is more expensive, so I'm gonna give you 2% to 3% for every dollar on top of it, that's not prorated based on the foundation. And then lastly, Act 18, the local, so what the IC bills, or they bill us, but then they all say, here, we, you get $350,000 in Act 18 money. So again, we had 1.46 million last year in expenses, revenue this year, last year, $727,000. Okay, so that's where the, where you can see, so this is all the money that we have broken down for the last nine years. Last year, obviously, was our largest year that we had at not, $727,000. So again, that is a, I meant roughly $700,000 of general fund dollars that's, that's paying for special ed. Okay, so Carly was talking about an Act 18, so they're proposing a 1.75 mil increase on the May 2022 ballot, probably to be received for fiscal year 2023. Probably said $10 million, so what I did was I drove it down and said, what does this do for North Muskegon, the community for North Muskegon? North Muskegon community is gonna pay to the millage of $282,000 a year, for all the taxpayers. North Muskegon benefit, as of right now, would get $296,000. Okay, so there's really two, plus, plus, in reality, Reese Puffer's gonna get a lot more money too, and they're gonna offset our bill. So in reality, it's probably over $300,000 of benefit that we're gonna get, cause there's two ways. There's benefits to both ways. The IC could just give us all the money, or they could give us a bunch of money and offset some of their cost of the Wesley transition, things like that. So the, the benefit, it's, I don't want it to be known that if this passes, we're gonna get $296,000 of revenue. We're gonna get $296,000 of benefit, either a lower expense or a higher of the revenue. I wanna make sure, so the, the key is, right now, you get $296,000, so we're gonna have a positive of $14,000. The difference is, with North Muskegon, the taxable values are not gonna continue to go up, your large tax bases are a lot of homes, right? So in these other communities, you're gonna have tax bases go up, and with a formula coming below. So the more tax base you have, the more money you're gonna get. North Muskegon tax base is gonna go up, but not to the highest of like if Amona Shores builds some more stuff, or in Fruitports, if the casino comes in for Fruitport, where you have all that tax base coming in. So the last thing is, it's transparent, so the business managers, special ed directors, and the IC, we wanted to come up with a formula in which how can special ed, Act 18 money get flowed through and be fully transparent? So probably what, three, four years, Carly, we created this formula. In reality, so this weight, so North Muskegon's weight is 2.53%, meaning that whatever Act 18 dollars comes, we get 2.53%. And how that was created was, you get 70% of your portion of how much is underfunded. So North Muskegon, at that year, I think this is 2020, we are, we're underfunded by $700,000. So you take 700 divided by 26 million, multiply by 70%, okay? Plus, 10% of general ed membership. So 1,027 divided by 24,000 students, and then do that 20, 20% of special ed. And you do that formula, it nets out to 2.53%. So then, we get 2.53% of whatever dollars, okay? So again, all of this, every year, is subject to change, right? If our enrollment goes up, we get more money, if our enrollment, it's like the techno. Your enrollment could technically go down, but if our enrollment goes down 1%, and everyone else's enrollment goes down 2%, we actually get more money. Okay, no different, if we, our enrollment goes up 1%, but everyone else's enrollment goes up 2%, we actually get less money. So it's, it's a formula that is known, yes, we can always change it, but again, you have a lot of eyes on it that how $10 million is gonna get prorated the same way. And I think that was it, Carly, do you have anything?
No, it's just that we have an existing ISD financial plan, that's what Marcus referencing up here. And any new dollars that would come in would flow through that existing formula that's already been worked on with the superintendents, our finance directors, our special ed directors. So it's not a new formula, it would be using those existing formulas, unless there was any different agreement that was brought to the table to do something different. Part of the reason, there's a quick turnaround on this, is because after we finished the survey, we hired Epic, ISD hired Epic MRI to do a countywide survey, that was done the second week in December. And from that survey, with the plethora of data that they gave us, was also that May was the time to put something like this on the ballot for a couple of different reasons. One, there were not any competing issues going on the ballots with our local districts, and that was really important. We didn't wanna be putting something on the ballot to benefit our locals that could inadvertently not benefit our locals if they had a competing bond or something that they were putting out there. So there's no local initiatives going on this May ballot. They also recommended to stay away from August and November, because those are gonna be very partisan voting times. And those do not tend to be pro-education voting blocks when it's a really partisan election. So those were some of the primary reasons to be putting it on the May ballot, that still resonate. The survey was really recent, it was just in December. And we had between 50 and 70% pro at any given point throughout the survey with all the clarifying questions. I know one of the questions that superintendents had was how this could impact the future CTE millage renewal. And the reality was, the data showed that people who vote pro-education vote pro-education. And that there was a 6% one way or another, at the end of it, 6% that said they would vote for, said they would only vote for the special education millage, but they would not vote for the other. And it was 7.5%, I think said that they would vote for the CTE, but not the special ed. So it was a very small and equal variable of people who would have voted any differently, with the vast majority saying that they would vote pro on both of them. Questions?
Lot of information, but the reason there's a lot of information there is cause there's been a lot of work that it has gotten us to this point. Carly's been right in the thick of it, so.
Well, and I appreciate the time, superintendents are gonna be getting some toolkits that can be customized by district to put out whatever information a district is comfortable with, that can modify it to whatever meets their needs, some other social media pieces. And I'm happy, and I'm sure Mark would love to present, if there's any other groups that you can think of. I've known Mark since he was first hired in Fruitport, when I worked in Fruitport. So we could take the show on the road, if you have any community groups or people that you think would benefit from hearing the presentation. I'm happy to meet with anybody.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can you give us a little bit of historical information on the last time we attempted this millage? And, and what we're doing differently this time, the approach, or maybe the circumstances or what that makes it, this a good time to be doing this?
So the last time that it was attempted was almost 15 years ago. So it was, were you thinking it was sooner?
I was thinking, well, I was thinking maybe 10, but wow.
So I believe it was in 2007 that it went on the ballot, they started the work in 2006, so 14, 15 years ago. Then it went out, I think one of the differences- I think one of the differences that we have right now, is that we have this historical data that really shows that underfunding is not going anywhere. And the percentage is growing, which really leads to that conversation, this isn't districts being irresponsible with their dollars. We didn't go from ninety percent funded in Muskegon County to forty percent funding, because we were overspending. We've stayed at that forty and fifty percent underfunding for all of this time. So I believe part of that message is, this is not a responsibility of our local school districts. This is local school districts meeting the needs of students, who are currently in their hallways, and doing so with fidelity, even though it takes a huge chunk out of their general fund expenditures. And this is a longstanding problem, that does not have a different solution into the future, um, if we don't do something different. I think right now, what we have on our side is that, as we know in education, social media can be both a blessing and a burden. Um, we do have a way to get more information out to people, so that people can make their own choices. Um, this isn't about saying that people have to vote one way or another, but it is making sure that our voter base is informed of the facts and that work. Um, and I, I wasn't at the ISD when they went through this fifteen years ago, um, but it's been a lot of good, but, good discussion with the superintendents, the special ed directors, the business managers. Um, I think there's a pretty good cohesive group and communication flow right now. I can't say whether that was the case fifteen years ago.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Great, no, thank you, thank you for a very thorough presentation, that's it. That comes up quickly, May?
Thank you, Carly.
Yes, May fourth.
May fourth, okay. Thank you, Carly. Mark, you're back at it here.
Yeah, I just, I, I meant, you guys have a budget resolution, uh, for all the funds that we have. Um, I'm just gonna quick give you an overview. Mostly of the non-general fund funds that we have, it's a lot of just looking at what the budget is, um, we're, we're seven, eight months done. Um, so kinda looking at where they are, uh, and where I expect them to be. Uh, the big things in the general fund, since our November amendment, is really just looking again at, uh, we have some TAs from the group, so then we kind of update that. But then also, again, seven, eight months of expenses, the big thing, so our, our deficit did decrease from November. Um, our fund balance is still over ten percent. Um, and I, you know, like, what I explained to the finance committee, the big thing is, is that, uh, as a board, I know that you guys like stable, like, ten, eleven percent. And you, the last couple of years, we've been like this, right? We've been nine, now we've been eleven, now we're getting back to ten. And part of that's just all this S R COVID dollars, you gotta play by the games. North Muskegon is a little bit on the, the backend, where it's a little bit more restrictive, um, where you got some districts in this county, most districts in this county, that can kinda do with it whatever they want, which is also a dangerous game, because it's one-time money. So, North Muskegon, John, Kurt, myself, we're getting a plan as to how to spend the money in the restrictive way, but also make sure that, at the end of it, we're not having this, oh, sorry, Lisa, your grant funded, I gotta cut you. Like, there's ways, there's forethought behind it, and, um, sometimes that, that's what we have. We're, uh, S R two and S R two equalization is, is ready to go. Um, North Muskegon should be getting approved for S R three. And then, we have that big one, so, uh, Kurt, John, and myself will be sending out something to the community, uh, to get their input, uh, kinda like what we did with S R three, cuz that's a requirement. You gotta have back and forth communication as to how to spend the money. So, um, we're generating that plan, uh, for the most restrictive fund of eight hundred thousand dollars, and that's the goal. So, that's kinda where you're seeing some of this, it's gonna be, hopefully, it's not gonna be as big like this for fund balance, but it, you know, it's gonna be a little bit of a, not a straight path for the next couple of years. Any questions? Pretty simple.
You did a great job spelling it all out hard, number four.
Thank you, Mark.
Sit back over there.
Do we need to motion each one of these?
That was, that was his presentation at the, when we get to the new business, that's what, I shall say, yeah. We have one more presentation.
Any other questions for Mark, though?
Does Mark have another presentation?
Yeah.
You, I, I can talk about special funding a lot more.
Mister Allen, quickly, jump up in front of me.
Well, I don't really, uh, part of, uh, the requirements on public schools is that we report on our website, and that we monitor student achievement. And so we have to have certain goals, which are spelled out for you guys on the first page. We had the same goals last year, uh, that we did for mid-year this year, we didn't meet them last year. We've already actually met our end-of-year goals as of early February this year, for reading math grades K through seven. So that was a pleasant surprise, um, and they'll be going on our website within the week. So, we actually need you guys to approve that this is, these were our goals, and this is our achievement level. And that's all I got, unless you want more.
We're gonna dig into that data a little bit more next month at the board meeting. It's also gonna have the state of the district, um, bringing up mine, those as the presentation for that night. So we'll be breaking those numbers down. Um, and I asked Mister Allen not to steal the thunder too much, but the, the reality is, when you look at those, um, our data, as much as the media and others want everyone to believe that every kid in the world has come out of this COVID thing horribly, um, the ca, that's not the case for us. And we've got some data now that, uh, can show a better picture, um, that can help us identify some groups that, that we do need to do more with, and, and we are. Some are programming other things that are in place, so, this is just the preliminary, and more, more information's gonna come at the next meeting. Needed to get this done at the February board meeting.
The format was very specific, so this needs those criteria.
Um, are we gonna be looking to approve this, though, today? It's not on the.
Oh, that's my phone, for nothing, clearly. Yeah, we need to add, uh, four, 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 to, and you can, we can use that same name to approve a little bit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
No more vacations for Christie.
Then do you want a motion now?
No, we'll get to it when we go through, we'll put it at the end, just to keep things, the numbering correct on our new business activities. Um, okay. Thank you, Mister Allen. All right, next, new business, first, four thirty-nine, approval of budget amendments.
All right, I am motioning to approve the amended general fund and budget.
Do we have to do these all, or can we do these?
We should probably do them all separately, because there's.
Yeah, that's fine.
Oh, you mean each of the budgets?
Yeah.
You can, you can, um, do the budget packet.
Yeah, I think you can do the budget packet.
All right.
Yeah.
Let's motion to approve the amended budget packet. For, let's see, is it the General Appropriations Act?
Uh, it's been moved, do we have support?
I support.
And any further questions on the budget amendments? All those in favor, say aye.
It's a roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call, right. Uh, we'll roll call, we'll start down.
Yes, yes.
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 Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mark, and everybody, and, um, Jess, it, uh, it's a lot of work that goes into all these financials. Keeping up to speed with all that stuff is a lot, and so, we're glad you guys are there to do it. Uh, next, we have a couple in a row here on some retirements, first, Miss Leishwa.
Yeah, um, in your packet, you've got Michelle's letter, making it official. Had a couple of meetings with her over the last few months, and this is the plan that, uh, she's definitely thought through, and is excited about, but, as she says, you know, it's also, it's that bittersweet thing. Michelle's been amazing, an amazing team member, and, uh, I, I saw her today, and this is just fitting, but, uh, I walked by the, the, some of the students were in line, getting ready for, um, food, and she was, um, laying herself across the, um, I think it was fruit, snack things, and other fruit, and just having fun with the kids, and like joking with them, and, um, I, I just happened to walk by, and she was laughing like crazy, and the kids were laughing. She's gonna be missed, but she just, uh, yeah, she's a great person, and, uh, she's been a wonderful employee as well. Gonna miss her. She's not going far, she's gonna sell houses.
Okay.
I move that we approve, with regret, the retirement of Michelle Leishwa.
Support.
Thank you, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Thank you, seventeen years, that's how it's, very impressive. Will be missed. And next, Mister Slocum.
Yep, his letter's in there as well. Had a chance to also meet with, um, John a couple of times over the last month or so, and, um, as he was thinking about this. This is a staff member, as you all know, who's done many presentations in front of this board. A lot of extra duties, uh, that he's taken on. Um, and not just taken on and, and done above and beyond, but even above and beyond, beyond, and to the point of taking some of these opportunities for our kids, and building them into curriculums that then are classes, and, um, they interact, and others. So, again, another employee that has been an incredible asset to North Muskegon schools, and, and John's gonna be missed. There's a lot of roles that that, that, uh, he fills, so, but. Somebody else is gonna have to step up and do the nine-eleven, uh, tribute too. He always does an incredible job at that.
Okay.
I move that we approve John Slocum's retire, retirement request. With regret.
Support.
All righty, it's been moved and seconded for Mister Slocum's retirement, another long-term teacher. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Well, thank you to both, uh, John and Michelle, for their service to the school. Certainly wish them the best in their future endeavors. Uh, next, school of choice openings.
Yeah, for those, uh, that have been on the board for a bit, um, it's gonna look a little different than what it has in the past few years. Our target, as students leave, uh, the fifth grade-ish, fourth, fifth grade cohort, is to try to have classes around seventy-five kids in a cohort, give or take. Um, that's a good number for our budget, and it's a good number to keep our class sizes where we like them. With the last two years, uh, I think people have made some decisions. It's a lot more homeschooling going on, uh, other districts made different decisions, uh, just protocols and other things that, um, families were making choices. Uh, I, I think we're gonna get many families back, uh, but at the same time, we need, we have this opportunity to open up slots. It's a one-time window, uh, each year, so, um, team of us sat down, and, and this, these are the numbers we're comfortable with. If we don't get these numbers, which is quite likely, cuz there's some big numbers on there, uh, for several grades, you know, we'll have to take a look at, at, uh, what does that mean, um, for our budget, and for staffing, and that kinda thing. But, first chance is, just like what we've tried to do in the past, is get our class sizes to where we, we, uh, can impact, positively impact the budget, and, and everything else that's related to that. Feel really comfortable with these, and we just have to see what happens. And, uh, big thanks to, uh, Doctor Snacky and, uh, Miss Thug, uh, they play a big role in pulling all this together, for you guys.
Are there any, uh, questions or comments regarding the openings for school of choice? These are, numbers are a little, certainly higher than they've been in, in, in recent years. But we've also anticipated that, that that might be likely, as it, um, it certainly is a big driver behind our, our revenues and resources that we have available, so it's definitely something we wanna keep an eye on.
All right, I am moved to approve the school of choice openings for school year twenty-two to twenty-three, as outlined in the packet.
Support.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? All right, um, next, we talked, um, recently about, uh, just some valuable employees that are, that are retiring, and, uh, long-term employees that are retiring. Well, this next, uh, action revolves, involves a, uh, a now fairly long-term employee who is not looking to retire in the, in the near future, which we are thankful for, um, Doctor Babcock. And, so, uh, there's been some discussions over the last, um, few months regarding, uh, Doctor Babcock's employment contract, and we have, uh, a revised contract that we would like to, um, uh, look for approval on. And it's, it's basically the same standard form contract that we've had, uh, since he's been, uh, our superintendent, but we've added, recommending adding two sections, uh, to increase compensation related to longevity, and his educational, um, achievements that he's, uh, completed since he's been here. And, uh, we've reviewed these in depth in the finance committee, and, and had some discussions. By implementing these changes, it sort of increases compensation to something commensurate with, with similarly sized and, and similar districts to North Muskegon, which we think is, uh, very much appropriate, and, uh, and well-deserved, so. That is the basis for this, uh, request. If there's any questions?
I move to approve the superintendent appointment contract. Kurt, uh, Todd.
Support.
Support. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? Congratulations, and thank you very much for, uh, your, your service for our school. We're lucky to have a superintendent that is, I'm sure, is, it's been a great pleasure to work with Kurt, and, and it's been, um, I think, having somebody like this for a lengthy period of time at a district our size is, is, is not all that common, and I, I think that, uh, we benefited tremendously for it. This also includes, uh, some time that he's certainly gonna be staying here too, which, uh, we definitely appreciate as well. Congratulations, and thank you. Okay, um, board comments?
Board.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, we have our new one. The academic school progress, uh, report that we saw earlier.
I move to approve the, uh, COVID academic school progress report. Support.
Any other questions on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Now, board comments, we'll start with you, Carolyn.
Oh, well, I wanna thank all of our presenters today. I always love seeing the students come up and, and present, um, but it's, I, I found that the, uh, special education millage information, very interesting, that we've all been so underfunded for so long. But, and I'd like to say thank you to our two retirees for their many years of service, both of them, and, uh, wish them well in their future endeavors, and, um, thank you to Kurt, as always.
Um, yeah, I, I echo all of that, love the presentations, um, thanks to Michelle and John for all their hard work. Um, both my girls are in, interact, and they love it, so hopefully someone, I'm just hoping that doesn't go away, but, um, yeah. And, good information for the millage.
Echo all that, I wanna thank, uh, Mark and Jessica for, you know, explaining some maybe off-the-wall questions in finance committee, but, uh, always comes with a good explanation, maybe way too in-depth sometimes, but, uh, no, we're good. But, uh, yeah, thanks, guys, appreciate it.
I just wish Michelle and John best of luck in their retirement. And, I echo what, what Ben says about the.
I just wish Michelle and John best of luck in their retirement. And I echo what Ben says about the finances. Thank you for putting the time into making these presentations understandable. And the information that you, you sent to us is really quite helpful. Kurt, I do have a, a question that maybe I should have asked earlier. What is our, our role and our limits and position when it comes to the millage?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I, I was going to add that, and then when Carly and Mark finished up, I then, since this is being governed by the M I I S D, we, we are like any other public citizen. We can voice our opinion. We can talk about this whenever, however, we want. This is not a North Muskegon public schools election, which, as you guys know, then we have other requirements that we have to have. So we are really not held to any requirements on one way or the other on this. So you can promote it however you want.
Will do.
I figured that's maybe why you were asking.
Well, I was wondering if I had to re, you know, resign to the board, you know, to do that or not.
Hold up, hold up. Let's keep this thing moving from there.
I'll also echo all those comments. And also, I guess, thank everybody. It's, I know we've had on, on the COVID front and the masking, and I know there's been some, some discussions on that. And it sounds like that's continued to move forward and be handled well by everybody in the school and outside the school. And I think compared to a lot of other areas, we've got good, good discussions on it. And I appreciate that that's how that that's been handled. So it continues to be.
Mike?
Your turn.
Okay. I'd like to wish Michelle and John well on their retirement. It's a different, different time once you leave teaching to, first of all, make the decision. Well, and Michelle's teaching too every day in the cafeteria, as far as I'm concerned. But anyway, I wish them well because they'll enjoy it. It's a different, different way of life after being at this school for so long.
Sure.
And thanks.
Kurt?
I just want to say thank you to the board. I take it, the work you've done for me is a huge compliment and vote of trust. And I can't say enough good about this district. I've said it a lot of times. We are, we are not the norm, and, and we're not. We're, we're an amazing place. And I am humbled and just feel so fortunate to be our superintendent. So thank you. And to our presentations today, they did, all did a great job, but I promise I won't pile four or five presentations on another meeting. That kind of got away from me, and I'm sorry, but they did a great job. So thanks, everybody.
All righty, great. Thank you, everybody. We are adjourned.